All right, we're back. All right, I'll call a meeting order for the May 11th work session here for the board supervisors. Mr. Vaughn, do you mind giving us an indication, please?
Yes, Father. Gracious God, our heavenly Father, we give you the honor of praise and the glory. And as we turn into this meeting today, tonight, that will be fitting in your sight.
Amen. Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. Let's get a part of the light, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to every public which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. As y'all are aware, for those at home, Chairman Vaughn is not here currently. He plans on attending as soon as he can arrive. In the meantime, our quarterback meeting here for us in two. And can I get approval of the agenda, please?
So moved approved the agenda.
There's a second.
Second.
All right, motion is second. Any discussion? Here none. All in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Agenda approved. Tonight, we have with us, I'm sorry, the members here, some staff. Ms. Tomer, Mr. Costin, and Ms. Donna Fletch is going to give us a presentation of the role of elected officials in emergency management. Ms. Donna Fletch is from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management. Thank you, my daughter.
Yep.
And Ms. Fletch, the floor is yours.
Right, thank you. Actually, I'm going to use this as a place to sit on papers here. So where I wanted to go with you all tonight is just some of the local officials kind of guidance on emergency management. This is normally an eight-hour course that is offered through FEMA. So we knew that none of you had eight hours in your day to sit through an eight-hour course. So we have condensed it down into just hopefully an hour and a half, two hours max, depending on the number of questions you have. So it was a very high-level view. I, this is the first time I've given this presentation, so I don't profess to have it all mineralized. But as we go through, if you have questions, please interrupt me and ask. And you've got handouts in front of you there that have the presentation slides, as well as a couple of other handouts that I'll go over at the end.
Ms. Fletch, if I could, if you don't mind, I believe the intention of the work sessions is to roughly go no more than two hours. Is that the understanding, Board members? Okay.
Yeah, we can definitely do that. I talk fast.
Okay. All right, clear your mind.
Yep. All right, so what we're going to do is we're going to review the emergency management-related legal requirements on the localities and the authorities that local governments have during an emergency. We're going to examine the process and mean of local declarations, state declarations, as well as federal declarations, identify the role of the CAO or CEO during disasters, and then review the responsibilities of localities and VDOT, both during Blue Sky and during disaster times. We're going to talk a little bit about the disaster recovery process and how that works, and then discuss the importance of after-action reports. So I think all of you would currently agree, and certainly your fire chief and police chief agree that all emergencies and disasters start and end at the local level. Okay, your fire chief and police chief and fire staff are usually the first on scene, they're the first things on the ground, and a lot of times when things go on, if it's long, they're the last to leave. Right? How your locality responds to a disaster is going to influence how citizens think of you. So, you know, and again, that initial response and the information you put out, all of that is how citizens are going to view how you guys manage a disaster. So it's really important that the response and recovery and coordination and all of that goes really well. There has been an increase in disasters over the last few years that have put some spotlight on emergency managers. Emergency managers are doing things we never thought we would do. If you ever thought we would be setting up a COVID vaccination site, or a COVID testing site, or any of that, we would have, you know, thought you were crazy. But again, we're doing a lot of things that we didn't used to do. I kudos to Nonaway County because you guys do have a full-time now emergency manager. So there are still localities that don't have a full-time emergency manager. That person wears lots of hats. And as I go through even the Blue Sky Day duties of emergency managers, I think you'll realize why it's important that you have a dedicated person to that role. All right. This is a little bit of a complex graphic here. Basically, again, we talked about everything starting out at the local level. That's on the left-hand side there. The local declaration piece, right before that, really, there is a little more local coordination. And that's going to be jurisdiction to jurisdiction. We're going to talk a little bit about MOUs with your neighboring jurisdictions and why those are important, they have. So there is a little bit of local coordination before you get there. But then, as you move up the chain, you're going to move up this graph, you're going to see it goes into a regional coordination and then into the state declaration process. So it's kind of local and then kind of local, regional, up to the VDOT regional staff, okay? And then up to the state EOC. The state EOC is going to pull in some others, maybe contractors or other entities that we need. If we declare and we think that we have enough damage, that warrant a presidential declaration, we'll request a presidential declaration. And then federal resources become available. So they don't become available unless we have that presidential declaration. All right. So there are a lot of things, again, and we talked about a lot of different types of disasters. Flooding is our number-one disaster in Virginia. There's a lot of lowland in Virginia, so we tend to get, when we have hurricanes even that affect the coast, a lot of that comes inland. As you guys know, we get tropical storms that result, and then they just dump a lot of rain on us. So we've had similar unrest in the past several years. Had more of that than we anticipated having. Hopefully, that has calmed down a little bit now. And then, of course, you guys are familiar with winter weather, as you've experienced some of that and the long-term impacts you can have from severe weather like that. Things that are coming up on the horizon, though, there are, when we look at grand dollars coming from the federal government, from FEMA, FEMA usually establishes what their priorities are. The state has priorities as well. And FEMA's are usually kind of very forward-leaning. Some of their priorities now are cyber threats. They're very concerned about cyber threats to government and critical want destruction and how that might impact citizens negatively. Destruction to elections, of course, is another thing they're very concerned about. I was told that the state Home Life Security grant that's getting ready to come out, we were hoping it was today, should be any day now. But there's, I think, a certain percentage, I believe it's like 5% to 10% of the grant dollars have to be spent on election security. So I believe that our grant staff is going to be reaching out through the board, through the state election department, to your registrars to talk about election security and how you all might benefit from grant funding in that regard. And then, of course, protecting soft targets in crowded places. We're seeing a lot of that right now going on across the nation where we're having shootings, and that's always a concern. A lot of the state Home Life Security dollars that come out are spent specifically on terrorism prevention. That is really the purpose of that grant. Many use it for other things that support that, but the terrorism prevention piece is really big. And then, of course, we have all experience, some supply chain shortages in the past couple of years. And all it would take is another pipeline to shut down and we could have a fuel shortage. So all those things impact us pretty significantly. So local emergency manager responsibilities. These are things out of Code of Virginia, so these are things that the code says the locality shall do. You shall be responsible for disaster mitigation, preparedness, response, and recovery. You have to identify a director of emergency management, as well as a coordinator of emergency management. You have to have an EOP, an emergency operations plan. You also have to conduct a comprehensive review and update of that plan and adopt it by the governing body every 40 years. And then you also have to establish an alert warning plan for dissemination of adequate and timely warning to the public. So, Buddy, I'm not sure, do you guys have an alert system here? Is it Code Red?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Code Red and Servo.
Yeah. But that alert warning plan hopefully has many facets and you can get messaging out to the public. If they don't enroll in Code Red or something, then you can get it out through social media, as well as other things. Now, these are the things that the Code of Virginia says local jurisdictions may do. They may work in collaboration with other public and private entities for mutual aid agreements. So that authorizes that, and those mutual aid agreements are really important. We do recommend you have, if you have mutual aid agreements, you have an expiration date on them. So otherwise, it's something so old, and when you have new leadership come on within locality, you may not, that person may not be aware that there's a mutual aid agreement, or it might need to be revisited and updated. So it's important if you have those that they expire and they get revised. And then the locality may declare a local emergency with the consent of the governing body, which you'll have experienced doing now. All right. Now we're going to look out to Blue Sky responsibilities of a local coordinator. I would venture to say these are only part of the things that most of our local emergency managers do. All right, we use the code, use locally emergency coordinator. We tend to call them emergency managers, those are really used to know us. Identifying hazards and evaluating risks. So every jurisdiction usually participates in a planning or mitigation plan through their planning district commission. So hopefully, you have a portion of a mitigation plan within the planning district commission plan, and that's where your hazards and your risks are listed. Developing and maintaining emergency operations plans to address hazards and cascading impacts. So there's always, Ted can tell you, when I came to VDOT at one point, he said, "We need an earthquake plan." And I said, "Oh, get earthquakes here." And lo and behold, we had just come back from a conference in San Diego where they had an earthquake. I noticed it, he didn't.
I slept through it.
He slept through it.
But we, I had seen a presentation on the New Madrid Fault Line and what it would do to the East Coast. And I said, "We got to have a plan." And then, within two weeks, we had an earthquake.
Yeah. So we definitely needed a plan. You know, it's not something we're used to in Virginia. So even though you have a plan and, you know, you've got everything covered right now, there's always new threats or new hazards that you might need to address or to develop a new portion of that plan. So the emergency coordinator is also going to coordinate with all the county departments and external agencies for disaster preparedness and response. So there's a lot of relationship building there that is really important that gets done during Blue Sky Days so that when people come into this EOC and have to work during a disaster, they know each other and they know, they can work together. They also conduct exercises to test the local EOPs, as well as supporting policies and procedures. We are doing an EOC exercise with the town of West Point, who has a fairly new program. They recently got recognized in the code. And we're going to test out their EOP and their EOC in the next week or so. And then planning for non-emergency events where there's a public safety risk. So these could be sporting events, concerts, parades, all that kind of stuff. There does take a level, planning for those to make sure that there are contingencies in place in case the public people get injured, that kind of thing.
So a good example of that would be the Fort Barfoot renaming had that type of focus.
Yeah, they had a small, like, command station set up in case they had that, and then had contingency things in place. So, and then building relationships with nearby localities. Again, that's that mutual aid piece. So if you need help, you know who you can call. I will say the town of Tappahannock, when they had the fire in Tappahannock, they called everybody they could call, you know? And they had those relationships in place. They had so many firefighters there, and if you're not familiar with Tappahannock, it was a whole block section that caught on fire. It was pretty significant. But they had so many firefighters there, they had trouble trying to figure out who was from where, because people just showed up to help too, you know? But those relationships are really important. And luckily, they got enough resources there to get that fire put out before it did more damage. All right. Equipment and maintaining the local EOC. So it looks like this has been well-equipped and maintained lately. It is much different than when I was down here before. So kudos to you all for investing in this, as any emergency operations center. Very nice that you've gotten some technology in here, so that'll help you maintain situational awareness when something goes on. And then communicating preparedness information to the public. This is something that sometimes is overlooked, but it is really important that you prepare the public for a disaster. We'll talk a little bit more about that, but that is part of the role of the emergency coordinator. That's kind of a standard role, but they would work with whoever handles your public affairs for that. Maintaining web EOC login. Web EOC is the system of record for the state. So we, that's where if you all need resources, Buddy or Ted could go in and put what resources you need in there, and we will prioritize it and get with them and find out exactly where they want to deliver, that kind of thing. And that's where he also sends SIP reps, situation reports up to the state. Part of our role is to get information from all of our localities and pull it together in a report and send it up through the governor's office. So that's something that is kind of the information exchange that we have to do there. Identifying local shelter locations and establishing shelter teams. So I know the majority of localities rely heavily on social services, so that social services sometimes have turnover in their positions maybe, or doesn't have staff in some of those positions, and if they do, it's minimal staff. So it is important that they work with social services regarding setting up and being able to operate a shelter. And then identifying resource and capability gaps and applying for grants to close those gaps. I will say, hey Buddy, he's many years in the state government. He's very familiar with grants, and if there's a way to get what you need through a grant, you know, I think he's certainly going to try to find it. Some emergency coordinators just don't have the time to apply for a grant. So remind me to tell you, Buddy, afterwards, there's a, one of our, I heard on the call today, somebody's using artificial intelligence to help them write their grant. Kind of interesting. So they can kind of write out what they want to say. Tell me how you can apply this, you know, make it have a nexus to terrorism, and it's adding that in there for it. So it might be a good tool for some people to use. And then applying for grants to minimize future risks. Those are mitigation grants. So if you have areas that routinely flood or things like that, then if you want to minimize that risk, you can apply for a grant to fit some of those areas. Now, let's talk about senior elected officials and what you guys normally would do on Blue Sky Days. So what your Blue Sky role would be. That would be to become familiar with the incident command system and the EOC operations. So the best way to do that would be through an exercise, actually. And that's something we could certainly support you guys and do. Support your local emergency coordinator, understanding their role and responsibilities, and ensure that departmental staff understand that they have a role as well. I would tell you that in VDOT, every employee that comes to work, whether they work in finance or HR, their secondary job is as an emergency manager. They realize they have a role in the emergency operations center, and it is written into their job description. So they have to agree to that when they sign on to become an employee. Also, one of your roles is to promote citizen preparedness by encouraging them to be self-sufficient for 72 hours or longer. I think that's increased over the years. It used to be 48, but I think, you know, even from the ice storm that you guys had, there were a lot of people that were in their homes for days, you know, that really didn't want to leave for whatever reason. They thought that they were fun, and I think we found some people were getting hypothermic and needed to go to the hospital after that. So the more we can do to promote that, I think the better you guys will certainly be. Understanding the local hazards and the basics of mitigation planning. If many of you have lived here for years, you probably know the hazards that go on around here very well. So that shouldn't be hard for you. And then identifying, documenting appropriate delegations of authority in advance that I'm an emergency or a disaster. So a delegation of authority is my, the biggest example is emergency procurement authority. So who can, you know, sign checks and purchase things in a disaster? And then who is that person's backup? Right? I've been to a lot of localities where they talked about, "Well, our finance director is the one that does that." And I looked at the finance director and said, "Do you plan on ever going home?" Because if you don't, then, you know, somebody else seems to have the authority to do that as well. So it's important to work those out. All right. You guys will also, I'm sorry, this is now VDOT's Blue Sky role, so you understand what we do on a day-to-day basis. So we are the lead state agency charged with coordinating disaster prevention, protection, mitigation, response, and recovery. We provide local government agents, state agencies with disaster planning, training, exercises, technical assistance. You know, we give guidance on grant applications, so it just kind of runs the gamut of anything that might be needed. And then we determine local and regional resource gaps and try to identify solutions. So we are working on, there's one of the larger mitigation projects we're working on right now, so the county of Sussex. If anybody's been through 460 when it floods in front of the Virginia diner. So we were able to get them a grant to study that area and figure out why it's flooding. And then they'll apply and come back for grant funding to fix it. So, but it is something that impacts their locality quite a bit. We do look for larger resource gaps. Dams are one of our concerns, I'll be honest. So that's something that we're looking at heavily in Virginia. We want to say, what high hazard dams do we have? You know, what is the inundation zone downstream from that dam? And what's the status of the dam? So we work with one of our state partners, DCR, on that. And then we administer a grant, preparedness mitigation and recovery grants. So we do a lot of grant work. Uh, let's see, we also do a lot of, participate in a lot of training and exercises. So just last week, we had an external register this exercise, and they went through a communications exercise for tornadoes. That if tornadoes were coming through the area, we had a lot of the public affairs people want to say, "Okay, what are you doing? Well, we put out this tornado message." It was kind of ironic that on, I think it was the Monday before that, they had the tornadoes in Virginia Beach. So I even called National Weather Service and said, "Are you guys still going forward with this?" Because I know you're probably busy, and they did. But that public messaging isn't really important. And then Virginia Beach tornado, the tornado warning came out one minute before they were starting to be damaged to homes. So people did not have a lot of notice at all. But we do a lot of that with a lot of our different organizations and private, secret partners even. We do exercises with Dominion around the Midway Power Plants. We do a lot of exercises with VDOT. And we are now working much more closely with VDOT than we ever have before so that if we have people stuck in a queue on an interstate, that we have a way to get to them and try to get them help. We also coordinate search and rescue operations. I think you guys had a recent search and rescue mission here. So we probably met Brian Saunders, who is very, very good at what he does. And that's something that is on the way thing. We have a lot of search and rescue missions on a regular basis, as well as hazardous materials incidents. So I think somebody heard me talk about the one today in the city of Richmond in Franco. But hazmat incidents are steady. They're just busy. And then we maintain emergency service contracts. So we, Ted just got our contracts redone. So we have new contracts now. We've had, I have, the last ones were like for five or seven years we'd have in place, but they redid that RFP. And we have, I believe, like six contractors that a locality or other entity can pull from if you need services, if you need planning, if you need somebody to run an exercise, somebody to do an after-action report, any of that. So those are contingent contracts. You can go out and get a quote from any of those vendors on what you want, but get them a scope of work and get a quote. And choose one of them. They're all pre-vetted and you don't have to do your own api. All right, the local emergency coordinators in the operations center join a disaster. So of course, you're going to activate your EOC if it's needed. I will say that. You have incidents like the one, and there's an incident command out with feet. All right? When that incident command in the field gets overwhelmed, normally that's when you open your EOC to support them. So you don't need to open it for everything, but it's, a lot of times, things can be handled from the field. For example, the search and rescue mission, those originally, most people don't open an EOC for that. But if you have a larger disaster, or you're expecting like hurricane, tropical, tropical storm come in, you might open your EOC in advance of that to prepare and make sure you have everything you need ready. Again, they're supporting that on-scene incident command with resource information. And then they're identifying objectives for the next operational period. So, and those objectives, normally they would develop and then share with the chairman of the board or through Ted, that kind of thing. They would agree that those are good objectives for the next operational period. They're going to be implementing those emergency plans. So if your EOP, that's what they're going to implement here in the EOC, is those emergency plans. And they're going to look at any cascading impacts. So for example, in the ice storm, you know, you don't know when the power's going to get restored for some of those places. So you do have those cascading impacts of people for days maybe not being able access food. So I think food was brought in for them. You may have places that can't get any fuel. You know, they don't have power, so gas stations can't pump fuel, things of that nature. So looking at kind of at future needs and those cascading impacts is important to anticipate those. They're going to, in the EOC here, they're going to collect, share, and disseminate information and send it up to the state, usually through web EOC. Sometimes that's not possible. We'll take it any way we can get it. They're going to provide appropriate incident information to whoever's handling public information. Do you guys have your own PIO, like a dedicated PIO?
I think they're planning on doing that at Park Institute, if I'm correct. Mr. Hahn and I have spoken, and the director, with the chairman, you take the coordinator role. I would pretty much be doing the external affairs PIO piece myself.
Yeah. And that is such an important piece of the emergency operations center. I would say at the state level, we develop talking points. We give those talking points to the state coordinator, emergency management. They go up to the Secretary of Public Safety, they go up to the governor's office, so that everybody, all the public and everybody's getting the same message. So I think whatever, you know, if you have your EOC open and talking points are developed and agreed upon here, it's really important that everybody uses those same talking points so the public doesn't get confused and doesn't really know what to expect. All right. Join a disaster as well, local emergency coordinators, if appropriate, they're going to manage operational aspects such as establishing emergency shelters or points of distribution, we always pause. So they might set up a place where you can give out bottled water or MREs, those kinds of things. That would be a point of distribution. And then, of course, is your school year shelter here, Buddy?
Yes.
Really? Okay. Do they have generators?
Yes.
We've talked about that before. Okay. And then develop a staffing plan, dependent upon how, if you're going to be doing 24/7 operations. In a smaller locality, it's hard to staff 24/7. It really is. I would say it's even sometimes harder than state level to get everybody you need to come in. But it is important that somebody's able to monitor those things overnight. And there's been times that I've been on midnight shift in the EOC and you think it's boring and nothing's going on, and then something happens and all of a sudden, everybody's like crazily busy. So it is important to staff it 24/7 if you anticipate impacts in the after, in the later hours. So some decision-making considerations. Again, what type of incident is this? Who is going to impact? Do we have time to prepare? Really, the only time we have to prepare is if it's a hurricane and the weather service is telling it's coming. Maybe severe thunderstorms, we might be able to prepare a little bit. Other than that, you can just prepare if it's like an event, like a parade or some other large event. What large events do you guys have here in Nonaway?
We've got the Crew Home coming, coming up. Then we have the Arts and Fact Craft Festival.
Juneteenth.
Juneteenth.
Mm-hmm.
And that's going to be, it looks like it's going to be two spots. It's going to start with the carnival and a lot of the street fair activity in Blackstone.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Interesting. And, yeah, when you have a bunch of crowds like that, it is really important to try to have contingencies in place. We have a lot of instances now where localities are trying to protect those crowds, you know, so somebody can't probably be going to them or something like that. So it's important, if you can, to prepare for whatever could happen. What areas is it likely to impact? We are focusing a lot of our energy on vulnerable communities. And, you know, there's a lot of different ways to identify what that vulnerable community is, but you all know what your vulnerable communities are better than anybody. So if it's going to impact them, you know that they're going to have more needs than maybe a community that's not quite as vulnerable. And is it going to impact businesses as well? So some of those businesses may be critical to your recovery. You know, if it's going to take out a Home Depot or Lowe's or that kind of thing where people would be able to get how the supplies they need to repair homes and stuff, that's certainly going to be a concern as well. And then can any of those impacts be mitigated? In most cases, they can't with severe weather. However, again, if it's an event that you're planning for, then that's a possibility. And are there available local resources to handle in addition to your daily requests for service? So if you think about your fire and your police and their normal calls for service, if things go sideways and you need a lot, get a lot more calls for service, they are certainly probably going to need help. So, and I'm sure, you know, a smaller locality, you don't have a lot of depth in your staff and fire and police. So those people are going to get one up pretty quick. All right, this is just talking, this graph is talking about the incident commander on scene. So the incident commander on scene does have the overall responsibility for the scene. So that person on scene there, they may have some of these support staff below them on scene, but once it gets too much to handle, that's when those support staff, for the most part, and somebody comes into the EOC and stands up the EOC. And then this is the EOC manager graphic. Basically, with PIO, they do recommend a safety officer and then a liaison officer, maybe to work with other localities or other government entities. And then a liaison officer, maybe to work with other localities or other government entities if needed. It is hard for localities, small localities, to fill all these holes. But they're there if you think you have a staff that can plug into those holes. So there may be an instance where you have a multi-jurisdictional incident and unified command is needed. So when something impacts multiple jurisdictions, this could be a train derailment, you know, on the order of two jurisdictions where they would need to work together as a unified command. Again, that's really important because that same message going to those two, the citizens in those jurisdictions, all of them getting the same message is really, really important. Yeah, there's no one commander, so it is a unified command. Sometimes that, you know, is a little difficult, but for the most part, it works well. And then this is what a unified command or charter would look like. So you might have like three jurisdictional members in a unified command. Some cases, these would be the emergency coordinator. It may be the county administrator, actually, if they're making decisions as well. So.
So Donald, go ahead. So as an example, if we were to have a train derailment, let's say it's in, right in Crew. So someone representing Crew, someone representing the county, someone representing the railwerken.
Yes.
Someone representing perhaps EPA or DEQ. So you could have, you know, one incident, but a lot of representation.
Yes.
To help guide through the response.
Yes. Absolutely. And I think in that instance, yeah, it is, you could definitely have state or that private sector entity. If you had a manufacturing plant, you might have the owner of that manufacturing plant as part of your incident committee. So, yes.
Well, but truth be told, that is a serious concern. But one of the more likely incidents here would be a long-lived tornado that would run through one town into another.
Yes.
That's a good example.
Yes. All right, during disasters, if something happens in our regional localities and it's more than one locality impacted, we usually set up like a mini EOC at the regional level. So we call it a regional coordination center. We, the state may activate the Emergency Emergency Operations Center, so the big EOC, I call it, there in Chesterfield. And we're going to respond to requests for assistance and coordinate the response recovery efforts with all of our state partners, non-government organizations at times, private sector partners. So there's a lot of things we do to try to de-conflict. For example, you know, if you've got trees down on a roadway, but it's got power lines in it, well, VDOT's not going to cut the tree until power lines are deactivated. And the power company doesn't want to come because it can't get through other roads to get there to deactivate the power line. So sometimes we just have to give them on the phone and get them to talk and figure out the best way to do it. Non-governmental organizations, I think we did, when we did feeding down here during the ice storm, those were volunteer groups that did that. So we coordinate between all of those. We learned something with that one though. But there are times where one group can only purchase the food, another group can cook it, and then another one can serve it. So it is a great, bigger coordinated effort than what you might originally think. So. And then process statewide mutual aid requests. So when something goes on here, you guys can automatically, if you have MOUs, you know, or even, even if you don't, you can go to your neighbor's jurisdiction and say, well, you helped us. You know, that MOU kind of outlines, okay, I'm going to pay you back for that, or I'm going to pay for your resources and your staff's time. But you can go to them without that and then kind of figure out that later. It's better to have that MOU. But if not, we can put in a request, or you can actually submit a request through us for statewide mutual aid. So we had this recently, a simple example is in Franco County, had a loss, a line of duty deaf. And they needed firefighters and fire crews to come in and backfill their staff while they went to their medical service. And we put out statewide mutual aid requests for that kind of support. We also put it out for the Tappan Hennett Fire. And we put it out for other things where we needed, we had like a mass fatality type on the highway, and they needed additional EMS support. And then in addition to processing those, we collect the situational awareness information, as I said, and provide it up to leadership. And if appropriate, the state coordinator will recommend a declaration, a state declaration. So of emergency. That does, that recommendation does come from the state coordinator. So during disasters or emergencies, you all are really kind of, I see you all as, we're something for the overall incident, but you're not in the command role of the incident, but you're helping the command, you're helping giving them directions, those kind of commanders in Ted. You know, this is what we think needs to be done. But you do have probably over 55 years of experience here between these two, in emergency management. So I think they would be able to guide you in what we think you should do. And then you guys agree to that, agree to what you think the fire needs on, and let them go forth and do what they need to do. Again, delegate authority, if it's needed, to the designated incident commander for specific responsibilities. Provide policy guidance. There may be legal things that you all need to look into and research for them, that they might need to know about. When it comes to declaring a state of emergency for a locality, we do have some that do it for things like, I'm going to declare because there's an ordinance that if I declare, I can tow vehicles along this roadway near where this incident occurred. So sometimes localities declare, and then after the incident, they rescind it because, you know, they just needed it so that they have that authority. Do you guys have, do you know if you have any authorities that are, that hinge on a declaration at all? No? That's probably good, because then it doesn't tie you down, you know, to having to declare all the time. But you certainly don't need to declare, you know, unless you're really overwhelmed.
If my state of emergency put its flag here.
I can hear it.
But yeah, so you don't need to declare unless you're really overwhelmed and you need additional resources. And then think about that declaration, at the state level, we've gotten some, we do them down for 30 days. And they automatically expire unless they need to be rescinded beforehand. But otherwise, we don't want a declaration to just go wild and last for a long time. If we have a large disaster, FEMA is going to ask, does that locality get declared? If you're looking at getting reimbursed. So it is important to do when it's really needed. But if you didn't declare, FEMA and even the Department of Accounts are going to go, well, it couldn't have been that big a deal if they hadn't declared a state of emergency. And then the senior official should establish and activate policies for tracking expenses. I cannot say how important that is enough. When something happens, that is the recovery piece, and recovery begins right at the beginning of the disaster. So if you have a separate code set up, and I guess you could even set it up in advance, so that when something happens and you're starting to spend money on it, on that disaster, you can automatically enter it into that code and it's going to track all of your expenses and keep your receipts as well. So very important. And it's hard to go back and collect all of that after the fact. And a lot of localities struggle with that. And then the senior officials may establish a policy group outside of the EOC. I think that would be more so in a multi-jurisdictional incident to make decisions that are, you know, may have some legal implications as well. We talked about already ensuring that quick and accurate information is communicated to the media and the public. Again, use prefer facts. Talk about the actions that were taken by the emergency responders and the community leaders, what the public can do to help, okay, what their role is, and what they can expect in the next days or weeks, or even a month. And then manage public expectations regarding your locality's role, as well as kind of the state and the federal government's role. A lot of people think FEMA's going to be able to come in and save them, and that just doesn't happen. Even in that Virginia Beach tornadoes that went through, that caused a lot of damage. You know, we're not going to get a present ownership declaration out of that. There's not going to be FEMA assistance. So. And ensure the staff at the EOC is supported with equipment, supplies and resources. You may need to put them up for lodging. Food is really important. I can tell you during one, I don't even remember what hurricane it was, it was a long one, whether it was Irene or what. We had been in there days and days and days, and I looked at my, the finance person, and I said, we need ice cream. And she said, what? She said, you want me to buy ice cream for 240 people? And I said, uh huh. And yeah, the higher up said, yes, we need ice cream. And but you have to be able to support your people and try to keep the morale up because day after day after day, this disaster is really hard. All right, recovery from a disaster. So recovery process is somewhat complex. We are the recovery liaison, VMS, between FEMA and local nonprofits after a disaster. There is a public assistance program, and that program provides grants to governmental entities and certain nonprofits after a disaster. Both this program and the one below it depend upon your per capita threshold. You want me to try to get it for you? So it depends on your per capita threshold. Every locality has a per capita threshold, and this latest one is based on the 2020 census, I believe, 2020 or 2022. And I believe yours is $63,000, $64,000. So once you reach $64,000 worth of expenses, then after that is when you could get some of this assistance. So public assistance is outlined. There's two handouts behind that packet that's stapled together. One is about public assistance and the other is about individual assistance. Individual assistance provides assistance and services to individuals like homeowners after a disaster. Usually it is for uninsured or underinsured properties. So that is part of the reason why there's not a lot of assistance going to go to Virginia Beach is because most of the homes are insured. So if they have insurance, then FEMA's not going to suddenly move that. It doesn't, it does not replace insurance. And I believe on that sheet too, it talks about the total amount that that national average payout is $4,000. So the maximum under that program is $37,900. That's not a lot. You know, it's intended to get people back on their feet, but it's not going to replace and hide anything like that. So after a disaster, FEMA hires contract staff to support the recovery activities and work with localities. Sometimes that's really hard for us because they set up meetings we're not aware of, or they, you know, provide a certain level of guidance that we haven't heard. So we try to coordinate them with them really closely on that. They do try to hire our contract staff from the local area. But so all of those people are usually new, coming in and coordinating disaster recovery. And then VM sets up applicant briefings to inform, whether it's the locality, businesses, or even citizens about the assistance that's available after a disaster. And then applicants have to file a request for public assistance within 30 days. So it is really important after a disaster, when you do a preliminary damage assessment, that you take a good look at what the damages are and report it up. What that does, we take all of those damage assessments from localities and we combine it all. And if it meets the state one per capita threshold, then we go up to the feds with it. So we have to meet our threshold within the state. One of the good things is that if VDOT has, for example, any state entity, the best example is VDOT, if they have a lot of damage to the roads, to the guardrails, all of that, and then they have to clean up all the debris from the roadways, whatever work they do in Norway County goes towards the threshold. Okay? So that's a help.
And just to clarify, that includes the individual assistance and public assistance needs to be turned in within the first 30 days of the end of the disaster?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. But yeah, with the state entities that you have, so you have National Guard, I don't know if that's state or military. I don't know for a bar foot, though, if that property is, who actually owns it.
Well, within the gate, we have some, the G-Tech and some, the Tal and some.
Yeah. So I mean, every locality usually has state entities within the locality that could, you know, if they have damages, could also.
Well, of course, we have the prison, we have UCBR, we've got several state facilities here.
Yeah, yeah.
And Don, can you talk a little bit about individual assistance? We have pretty good luck with public assistance in all the counties around here. Because we meet the threshold, but I used to get a lot of calls about individual assistance because obviously, every, every human being, if they can find an opportunity after a disaster, they want to tap in. But if they have insurance, that's number one, that wipes them out.
Yes.
And then go over the other reasons they would be denied, because most of it's denied. I've not even seen anybody get individual assistance.
Well, just throw your attention to the bottom right-hand corner on the individual assistance declaration process. In the last 20 years, Virginia's only had three declarations for IAT.
Yeah. It is really hard to get. And I don't, if you ask me all the reasons why, I'm not able to tell you all those. I have to go back to our recovery staff for that. So it's not something I'm deeply familiar with. But yeah, it is really hard to get. I will say that. And the reimbursement process for like even public assistance, I think it's lengthy for individual assistance, but for public assistance, it can take one to two years before you get to write that.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
We know that, Don.
Yes.
Let me, let me make an announcement. Today, Ellen Maitre, the treasurer, sent us a note that we had received our reimbursement for the ice storm today.
Now, I will tell you this though. FEMA is pushing us to push through reimbursements quicker because we review them and then we send them to FEMA. Now they're saying, you don't need to review them that much, not unless they're really large, that kind of thing. However, what happens is when we send those to FEMA, if FEMA reviews them and they say, oh, no, this is not right, we can't reimburse for this, then they come back to the state, who comes back to the locality and says, you owe us $30,000 back. The problem with that, so that $30,000 or whatever it is you owe back could be two years after the incident, and it could be money you didn't budget for. So it is really important that you keep all of your documentation, all of your receipts, and do the best job you can of capturing all of that. That is just as important as everything else during a disaster, in my opinion. So we have had that happen recently. FEMA has come back and told a locality, you owe us money back. So it's not fun for the emergency coordinator to go to the city council or to the board and say, oh, we have to pay money back now. Something we definitely want to try to avoid. Yeah? I'm not moving, buddy. Battery might get low.
It ain't got no gas in it.
You have to fly over here a moment.
It's acting like some folks out there. There you go.
I did, I did that.
Okay.
It's a delight. Is that the right one?
Yes, this is the right one. Yeah. Yeah, there is. So yeah, so we have a whole document that guides you through the public assistance process. And it's quite lengthy. And it is not something, but it's something that Buddy and then maybe the staff will look at if you get into a disaster. But we do have a whole guide that will guide you through the whole thing. It is important after an incident to do an after action review with all of the stakeholders that were there after the disaster. I know, I think you all did this somewhat after the ice storm. That is something that VM can assist you with, as long as we're not doing it for a whole bunch of localities, you know. You're going to just kind of summarize the impacts, talk about what worked well, what did not work well, and then come up with an improvement plan of those things that didn't work well and how those can be changed. And then of course, a timeline. If those things need to be changed, when is, what's the timeline and who's that task assigned to? So too many times, everybody, people do after action reports, but then nothing ever gets changed. And in the next disaster, you have the same after action papers. So in that. And then also, you know, that might identify that you need more technology in your EOC. You know, there's a lot of different things, maybe you need more staff training on how to do things. So. And that's it. See, I told you guys I'd talk fast. What questions do you have for me?
Do you mind getting a question?
All right, am I overwhelmed?
No, no, it's actually good.
He explained very well.
This group chat is on pretty quick too.
Well, you've got some experience and, you know, you've done this before.
Well, Mr. Pletta, I appreciate it very much, the time you took to come down here and explain this to us and to the public as well. And why, I'm sorry, Ms. Kelly is here with us too, from staff. And I missed her a little bit earlier, it's kind of out of my line of sight, and I apologize to you, Ms. Kelly. But she's very valuable to the county here at these meetings as well. Right now, next on the dinner, Mr. Buddy Hyde wants to review the Norway County draft EOP.
Okay. Let me try to get it up.
We're trying to make it out of the screen. Oh, sorry about that.
I need to switch, I'll switch. All right.
Technology. Supposed to help, not hinder.
What I can do is, I'll just use a switcher.
Buddy, we can come back to you if we need to, if I would help you. We can go to the.
I just need to switch it up.
Okay.
There we go. Do you want the clicker?
I don't think it's going to be really good.
Oh, it is, it is, yeah.
It's a word, it's a word document. I might need to switch, um, files in a second because I want to show that train annex. See if I can work it right here. Oh yeah, this is good. So this is not slide shows, I'm going to show you is a word document. I'm trying to be quick because I know you, uh, Mr. Roy said we need to go ahead and, uh, wrap up. Um, so this is exciting time. So based on what Ms. Pletta just told you about, um, we are going to, you're going to see some of this in here, what she just talked about. And a lot of the things in the after-action last year, you're looking at it in here. You're also looking at, uh, the fact that, you know, we have a rewrite on this, which was not even part of the, uh, the plans. It was part of the, uh, the code. So, uh, we dressed it up a little bit. Hope you liked that little graphic, thanks to Susan. She let, she, uh, grabbed that and I put it all in it. So we're moving right along. I'm, I'm just going to show you some highlights. Now, I will tell you, your version will get page numbers, but all day today I was doing some formatting, closing up. We're, we're a little smaller in size. I tried to cut this plan down a little bit. It's really big, still big, but I've got to go and put the page numbers in. But I want you to see the topics, they won't change. So we'll have page numbers in your version that you'll vote on next week. You'll have the board resolution up front and Andrew has already, um, fixed that for your signature. We've got these other documents that are just part of the boilerplate, you know, distribution, who it goes to. You'll see in a minute who that is. We'll go through roles and responsibilities. We'll go through the incident action plans. Everything is in here to run an incident. And it's a lot of, it's a little bit old, it's a little bit new, but it's all refreshed. So I don't think we have anything outdated in this. I've surely been working on it for a while. It's all up to date as far as twenty-three goes. So we're moving forward and this will be easier to revise on the next go-round. And I'm probably not going to even wait four years because now that you have me in full time, that's what most localities are dealing with. They're dealing with either no one or a part-timer and it's hard to do the four-year rewrite until the four years comes. But I'm hoping to kind of get it on top of the four, four years, you know, two, two to three years. But it's a fluid document like Mr. Kasten and I were talking about. This is something that we will, uh, we will constantly be working on this. As you, as you adopt the content, we will have small things that will, that will be, um.
So for example, if we have an event and we work on the event, we need to make a plan change. We'll make the plan change. We're not going to wait four years.
Right, that's right. So the sample declaration of emergencies in there, and I keep a copy of that anyway. We used that, you know, last year for the, uh, drought that we had. We did it for one snowstorm, I think, when they had the northern event. Now, this is where the media is. Um, once you get through the basic plan, which kind of just does an overview of what she talked about as far as code pieces, is this is where we get into Nottaway County. This is where we get into the people that we know. And I like the part she had about relationships because that's exactly what we've been doing for about a year and a half. Is as soon as, you know, I hit the ground, um, it's really nice and it's really good people, really good people that we deal with here. Super professional people. And, uh, and I'll go over a couple of them as we go along, but you know, these are the ESs and that's kind of how I talk. I talk in ESs. The, this format's going to go away eventually because a lot of counties are moving away from it, but it's still very, very good. It's, it's, it's really hits the, the spot because you're going straight to what you need, like VDOT's transportation. Let's take a look. Communications, obviously is our, is our command center, um, I mean, our dispatch center. Let me move along, some random, hang on this one. So we go right on through. And these tabs are documents, obviously, and you remember the old one. Tabs are something that's in everyone's EOP, shelter registration form. This is something that Shannon would use when she comes in. You know, she's in charge of SIPS, the Mass Care Housing and Human Services. Um, and actually, let me go back and tell you who each one are. Transportation is the school bus garage and Babs. Communications is Lauren Brown in the nine-one-one center. Public Works, TJ Shelton and Dan Martin with the two tanks, Public Works. Cause we don't have a Public Works. Engineering is anyone that we come in as a contractor that says, we have a building collapse and we need an engineer to come in and take a look. And then that's where we would have our building official. He's embedded in three, a new building official and any building official. And maybe even Mr. Zodi with, uh, planning and decompostion development. There's a place in there for them. Firefighting, that's a no-brainer, it's all of our departments. Plus myself, uh, emergency management, that's all of us. That's actually me, it's the director who is Steve right now. It's Mr. Kasten, it's staff, it's everybody. It's everybody that comes down here. And we've got a lot of documents right here ready to use. Number six is Shannon Reed and her staff. And I noticed Donna mentioned, you know, it is hard in a rural locality to staff a shelter. We got it. She's got twenty-four to twenty-seven. She's got first string, she has second string, and the church groups and the community groups are third string and fourth string. So we can integrate those people and we have all the totes ready to go, team documents are ready to go, and the shelters are ready to go. And all they got to do, Shannon is awesome, and all she's got to do is put it in place. Number seven, logistics. Our logistics person is Susan Tucker. Susan did a great job during the ice storm, I was told, and she can call up resources. So she's a person that we would actually tap for logistics. So number seven is going up there and looking at these state-level commodity managers and, and like if we need propane or we need fuel, you know, that's what the commodity managers are. We'll take a look at that in a second. All right, number eight, it's upstairs. The, it will be Chris Thompson. She's in charge of, she's our senior nurse here in Nottaway Health Department. So it's the Piedmont Health District. It's going to be Dr. Almond and it's going to be Chris. And it's going to be Chris, uh, Thompson. I said Chris Thompson, but Chris Wright is upstairs. We have two Chris's. Chris Wright's the nurse, Chris Thompson is the emergency coordinator for the Department of Health. So that's in, that's in number eight. As well as EMS. We've got our EMS resources at the bottom. Number nine, we did this last Sunday, right, Mr. Roy?
Yes, sir.
So search and rescue is two types. It's urban search and rescue, which we took that out. And we're not urban anyway, but urban is basically buildings. Um, so we do have that, that component. But that's where the fire departments come in, that's where the Crater Regional Team comes in from, from the north, people like that. But then you have the sheriff and the local law enforcement take care of wilderness searches. Hazards Materials, that will be me, as a Hazards Materials Coordinator for the county. Along with the hazmat teams, we have all Nottaway County hazmat truck, things like that. Agriculture Resources, Absolute, the Virginia Cooperative Extension, and Terry Abson. So we have a leader in every one of these groups, already identified. Uh, Public Safety and Security, that's Sheriff Jones and the police chiefs. And they take care of the law enforcement resources and entry levels, going into a restricted area if they have to coordinate off for some reason and so forth. They have forms for that. Then we have recovery. And the recovery is a little bit of planning, but it's a little bit of social services. Um, you know, obviously Mr. Zodi would probably have a part in this as a planning, uh, planning director. Um, just, just a lot of things that we would have to do after the fact. Recovery, as you know, from the ice storm, that's later. You know, it's going to be something we're not doing immediately, but we'll come in here a day or so after, seventy-two hours later, start talking about it and looking at the assessments. External Affairs, that'll be Mr. Kasten, as he mentioned earlier. He's PIO, we all agreed on that. And it's a good thing, and who would be the backup? Well, it would be the Chair of the Board, who's the Director of Emergency Management and Sheriff Jones. You know, we've got two and three and even four, I could even jump in there too. So we have about four deep on that, but Mr. Kasten would be the first one. To talk to the media, to do the different things and coordinate with you all and see if someone wants to get some camera time, wants to say something to Channel Six, Channel Eight. You know, obviously it's a tag-team operation when it comes to media anyway.
Buddy, did I get any wrong?
Yes.
Two things. Well, External Affairs is not just about the media. Um, you sometimes get congressional inquiries, um, from elected officials wanting to know what's going on to try to take that, what's going on off of the people who are really engaged in the operation. So you kind of have to have that buffer. Um, Buddy, there you go, it's fast, which we appreciate. You missed energy, you skipped over energy.
Well, actually, can I do it down and also go into the, yeah, I was just showing a table of contents. Really, I should probably be talking about it as I go deeper because you'll, you'll see the more exciting, uh, material coming up. Okay, so Mineralitarian Affairs, obviously we've got Ford Pickett and I'll, I'll talk about that a little bit. Yeah, Barfoot. I said it, Mr. Roy, I said it. Uh, Ford Barfoot, we're so glad to have them, what a gem, um, for resources. They've got the thirty-four civil support team out there for, for Hazards Materials. And the volunteer donation management are going to be our volunteer groups that we've been working with for this past year. Oops. I don't know what I did, Don. Let me see if we can, uh, you may have to do something on the screen.
Go down here.
Uh, you know what, it's actually the same.
More right, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I did, that's what I did. Make it right, okay. All right, now, so let's move through here kind of quick. That's the table of contents. All right, start off, proof of implementation, a little code of Virginia there. This is your document to be signed next week. Moving right along, this is if, uh, we have changes, which we do. And anything going forward, we'll make those changes. We have record of distribution, this is who it's going to. We'll put down the name and we'll actually sign it off as to whether it was electronic or hard copy. Uh, we've got the basic plan. All right, the basic plan is about thirty pages roughly, or maybe off a few. There's Fort Barfoot, made a change to that. And we've, uh, we've changed a lot in this, you know, talking about our terrain and, and what our, our threats are. Uh, we've updated the code of Virginia in this, in the document. Um, and we, and we reference, uh, what the document is about. So here it is, the Nottaway County Ops Plan is what we're looking at now as the basic plan, obviously. You remember this in the ice storm and then it's followed by the ESs, the seventeen, and then the support annexes and then the incident annexes. Now, when I get to the end, I'm going to talk about, we're going to put a derailment, a train derailment annex right here. And we're going to do an active shooter one as well. So, uh, Sheriff and I are talking about that already, but today we need an active shooter annex. There's no doubt about it, we need a document just for that. And it could be called threat, it could be, you know, not a shooter, but just a threat. It could be handle bomb threats, handle active shooters. So moving right along, we need, we will identify that. And, and it gets a little more specific. This is more broad based on the front, so let me fast forward through. These are just guidance points, planning assumptions. There's NIMS. NIMS is mentioned a lot in here. We have to use NIMS and you'll see in a minute where we have the adoption of NIMS in here. Now, this would be like in this case, it's Steve. Last, last year it was, um, Ms. Shackleton. This year is Mr. Bowen. This is really outlining what he does. And with me coming on board, what I'm trying to do in this plan is spell it out as to who the coordinator of emergency management is. This is my title by day slash my title during a disaster. And the reason we play those words back and forth and the reason we play director is even though he's Chair of the Board during the disaster, he puts that hat on. So I put this hat on. And so it's kind of a change in titles. But a lot of people, you know, and they look at it and go, well, who is that? You're the emergency service coordinator, who's the coordinator of emergency, same person? Okay, so moving right along, uh, we're just playing with the state terms, you know, what's in the code of Virginia. The ESs are all through here, non-governmental and volunteer. This is where we actually talk about our VOAD and this is the new group that I've been working with. We're going to go ahead and name them. It's the Nottaway County Community Organizations Active in Disasters, the COAD. So we've got the VOAD at the Virginia level and Nottaway level, we've got the COAD. I think they're going to be really cool. It's your churches, it's your chambers of commerce, it's going to be all your civic group, Rotary, Kuonos. Lions Club, uh, Mr. Phil Miskovit called me about Lions doing a drill. So, uh, you know, that's what we're going to be doing with him eventually. They can't hardly wait, they had to cancel. Uh, Department of Social Services, Red Cross, superstars in this, okay? Moving right along, these are just roles on the organizational structure, response resources. Local, there's your local emergency planning committee, we met in here yesterday. That's a different group. Um, moving right along, Medical Reserve Corps is taking some interest. They were at Fort Barfoot's renaming ceremony, we had them come out. So they're taking a little bit more interest. We have a Piedmont Health District, you know, Dr. Alma talks to Mr. Kasten and I quite a bit. And I'm sure she talks to some of you as well. Um, I think we have a good health district. Criminal Justice Services, this is just part of code, you just need a opinion maker. Um, if you read through code, it tells you you have to have this criminal injury compensation fund, uh, available to people to call. Concept of Ops, real, real quick, a little bit about the laws, I'm moving right along here. Now, all of this has got some Nottaway flavor in it. So here we go. This is where the EOC is located, obviously. I don't think we had that spelled out in the old one, it's quite as well, but it's there now with the exact address. And the fact that we're in the basement, so I even talk about handling that the rail of the bill because we still get people tell us all the time, they get confused. They, they don't know what it comes to, so, um, hopefully they'll solve that. Day-to-day activities, that's what we all do, based on what, uh, Donna was talking about. Here's the succession written in about the Chair of the Board. If, like for instance, uh, Chair of the Board is not present, shall be another member of the Board. You pick. So we want to make sure we had that noted. All right, moving right along. The county has to be prepared for seventy-two hours on your own to be able to, to murder the impact of a disaster on seventy-two hours and then regroup. Okay, Director of Emergency, okay, moving right along. I'm going to show you some flavor on these organizations. It's Declaration of Emergencies in here, that's the code of Virginia definition. And this is everything she just kind of talked about. We've got the sit rep in here and moving right along. And here's what we're supposed to be doing. Obviously, we're supposed to do damage assessments within seventy-two hours and after-action. We've got sit reps, we're constantly doing those, we're doing those on web EOC. And by the way, Ted mentioned it, but the web EOC users right now that are qualified to do it, I'm myself, Ted, Susan, and we're going to put some more on it. I think Katie too, Katie, you got it too. So, uh, we have, we have at least four and we need to get Andrew on it. But we want to put at least a handful of people that can do web EOC because that's, that's a constant barrage of information. I know Richmond wants it and I can tell you from the disasters that I've worked, it's always after the fact. You do what you have to do and come back to the computer like, but it's nice when you can constantly put that info into Richmond. And I know, um, Donna's up there going like, yeah, she's headed away on this weekend, but, uh, but we finally get it in there. All right, State of Emergencies, that's covered. Moving right along to concurrent implementation of plans, here's our organizational structure. Again, NIMS. And there's all the different things that come under NIMS, the command post, us, chaperone board, unified commands, all there. All right, let me see if I can get over here. My eyes is trying to slow up.
Buddy, while you're hung there, can you, can you, uh, mention what the NIMS, uh, means?
National Incident Management System. And ICS is a component of that. So people get it confused because ICS is what we use in the field and what we use in here. NIMS is what we use, it has six different areas with ICS being one of them. It's just a total system, um, and NIMS again was adopted, and so we had it into as well.
And it's, it's the National Incident Management System. We came in post nine-eleven. And, uh, it was so that everybody kind of talked the same talk. So if you were supporting a locality in your state, what you said was, meant the same thing in your locality as it did in their locality and across state lines, so on and so forth.
Okay, so moving along to warnings and bulletins. I think it's a bad reading.
Buddy, do you need a page down up here?
Um, I'll get it right here. Let's see if this doesn't work, I'll get you to do it. All right, take notice of this. This is all I need. So Nottaway County Emergency Services Declaration and EOC, we covered that. All right, now, dissemination of warning and bulletins. These are all the things we use. Code Red, National Weather, National Warning, the National EAS, and State Local. Not only that, we have, uh, in here several times, social media, which is huge, with Susan putting up social media. And we're also going to put up a new page for emergency services. That'll actually help disseminate information, so that'll be good. Respond to Health and Safety, that's all, safety, response actions, recovery actions. These are all things, you saw it happen during the ice storm. Okay, now ongoing plan management, this is the part she talked about with four years. And we'll be able to keep on track with that. Now, appendices, not going, not going to bore you with those, but a good glossary here. I've added some new things in, I think NIMS that Mr. Roy just mentioned, I think I put that in here. Alert Systems in here. There's the Incident Command verbiage, I put the Incident Commander, that wasn't in there before. Just knowing who that person is, the Local Emergency and the Local Emergency Planning Committee. There's Unified Command. Okay, and now moving right along to the acronyms. Got a new, a new list of acronyms. So we'll bore you with that. It's just a good read later on. It's just a good read later on. Everything here should be covered, and then we talk about authorities, updated that. And then we have the Nottoway County two thousand twenty-three plan, along with previous editions on track. And then we've got the Virginia Ops Plan, which was done a couple of years ago. All right, now, here's where it's mentioned. Matrix of Responsibility, changed this one up, updated it. Take a look at your Nottoway County organizations at the top. You read it as primary, it's a primary role, and the yellow obviously is secondary, so we just kind of cleaned it up a little bit. Added a few roads to it too, but we did not have Virginia Tech Corruptive Extension in here, and we didn't have VDOT, and we didn't have solid waste. So Public Works, obviously with the towns, and everybody has a role in here. Superintendent of Schools is there as well. So you can just see the things that we're talking about, search and rescue, if you want, let's take a look at that one. So search and rescue, you know, the yellow box, look how many secondary agencies we have, State Police, EMS, volunteer fire companies, and us, and the Sheriff's Department being primary.
Mr. Hyde, I'm gonna turn the notes over to the Chairman.
If I'm controlled, let's start all over. Don't give me that look. Sorry about that. Buddy, I'm sorry. Oh, no problem. No problem. We're just trying to get our mice to work. But anyway, so this is a good chart for you, just take, when you get a copy of yours, you'll be able to go through that and take a look at that. All right, the next thing is succession of authorities. This is a good. So we'll start off with, like for instance, Mr. Bowen. Mr. Bowen is the Director, and the direction and control of a disaster would be he and I at this point, whoever the Chair is and I. And then that would be like the one-two. If someone stepped out, he could go out for a little while, all right? And then as far as public information goes, we went ahead and went three deep on that. We've got the County Administrator, as I said, PIO. Sheriff is number two, and then we've got, Mr. Bowen is number three right here. That can be changed around, but basically, the three of them can get together and say, who's gonna talk to the media now? And who's gonna get that information out? Law enforcement wise, you've got a sheriff and a deputy. Most everybody has a one and two, so that's kind of the gist of this, is everybody's number one and number two. And we can go as far as we need to go, but I think those organizations, if you've been in organizations, you know, they know what to do. They know when that top person goes out, they know who the next one is. So that's all this is, is put it in documentation for that. And like with Ms. Reed, she goes out, she has a senior social worker come in. All right, now, the next thing is your plan distribution. This is who's gonna get the copy of this plan. But I guess, you know, this is a affordable thing, so I guess anybody that wants it, we gotta be careful with the phone numbers. I don't find mine, mine is on my card, everybody has that, but we try to be very respectful and put the office number, not the cell number. So, you know, we've gotta work through that, but right now, that's how they stay. So as you can see who's gonna get this. We went ahead and put in the emergency management positions and the administration, then we have the Sheriff, then we have the town managers. Fire Chief next, then Mr. Fisher at the Squad, and the Police Chiefs, and then of course, Dr. Alma and Dr. Brown. And we can certainly add, but that's a bigger list than we had in the old EOP, so I thought that was good. Now, thank you, Ms. Kelly, for cleaning this up. We had a really faded copy on the old one, so we went back and pulled it in two thousand and five, when Ray Taylor was Chair. Mr. Bowen, you're that. Two thousand and five adoption of NIMS. So I've even, oops, Donna, come back. Let me see if I can get back to you.
Make it up for me?
Yeah, I might have to. I think you need to control it, because I think, if you can, can you do it with the microphone? And I'll just talk through.
I can just do it with the page, you can page change.
I think this is no worry about it for either, because it was playing out over here, I think I'm too far away.
He can just scroll, I'll talk fast. So the Incident Management, you saw where we adopted it, so Nottoway County doesn't need to do that again. You know, we are under NIMS, everyone should be trained in NIMS and using NIMS. Declaration, you go ahead. Everybody's seen that. Declaration. All right, now, I'm gonna drop the org chart in here. I had a little problem technical today getting the org chart in, but this will be the org chart like she showed you, where it shows the Director, and it shows all of us. It shows all of us. So we'll drop that in there. Now, we go into ESFs, and if we'll pause on each one just a little bit. Come on through, and Transportation, obviously, this is gonna be the school bus garage and the Babs. Go on down. Keep on going, that's just a checklist. These are the agencies in Nottoway County. All right, let's go on down to the tab. So basically, in here, it talks about what the school bus garage has, Jay Schreiser giving me information, you can keep on there. This is what they would do. All right, now, it's also VDOT, so this is a VDOT list on what's going on in Nottoway County. All right, go on down, that's how they, go back up. All right, this is all the snowplows and dump trucks, everything's listed right here in ESF one. So this is the road clearing side. Now, let's talk about the riding side. If someone needs a ride, they can either go to, we go to Nottoway Public Schools with twenty buses, free handicap, and go on down. And Jay gave you those yesterday, the new numbers, but I'd really like what Babs has. Babs has fourteen buses, all of them ADA compliant and air-conditioned. That's pretty awesome. So we have them in that section, and I've talked to Mary a couple of times, I don't think it'd be a problem, you know, getting what we need. That'll work really good on evacuation, okay? Now, Communications is all Lauren Brown at the nine-one-sun, so you can go on down. This is really what she would do. And all of this is really technology, speak of what she would do in the EOC, oh, not the EOC, but the ECC. And that's something that, moving forward, scrolled up just a little bit, okay, right here. So the Emergency Communications Center, a lot of people get it confused with the EOC. So, because we get tongue-tied, it's ECC across the road and EOC over here. But the ECC is awesome, and this is what they can do. You know, they set out alert systems, they do Code Red, I can do Code Red, Ted can do Code Red, we have three people that can launch Code Red, we've got Noel coming in, we have newspapers, amateur ham radio, and this is a big one, social media platform. We really want to use that. That's gonna be big in the Word Day. So this is all about disseminating and having her staff come back. And this is a special list of who would be notified as soon as there's a tornado, hurricane, flash flood. First person is gonna be Mr. Bowen. And then myself and the Sheriff, of course, Mr. Coniston's gonna be in there too, but we'll all probably hit our phone tree and we'll call each other. But this is kind of the succession, making sure you know what's going on. And then these in that, count in that order, the two schools, and Social Services and the Health Department, okay? Now, Code Red's gonna go in that blank, Code Red subscription form. And then these are the public information up-to-date list for us, for papers and radio stations, okay? TV stations. This will be a list that Lauren would use to do radio communications, okay? Moving right along, this is the Public Works, and I think we can go a little quicker here. Public Works is again, gonna be, you know, TJ Shelton and Dan Martin are gonna be like the leads on this, and these are the things that they would do. They would take this, look at it, and we would say, what is Public Works? Come on down. The mission, to provide charts to things, like if we wanted something on the reservoir dam, we can take a look at it, they can provide us with that. I've got Planning and Economic Development is in here too, okay? All right, moving right along. Okay, and these are what you have. So take a look, it's a pretty good team here. And of course, so Mr. McDaniel's taking Chef's place right now until they fill that spot. We have Gary in that solid waste, but you can see, that's a team that can provide machinery and moving capability for debris. And actually, we have loaders now, still waiting on Dan and TJ to give me a little bit of information, but we'll stick that in. That's gonna be the part of, I hope we have that flexibility, we don't have to come back and vote on it again, but we'll drop it in when they get it to us. This is what the Nottoway County, this is what the landfill owns. I think y'all know that, because I actually talked about it the other night, right? This is basically, if we condemn a house, just to say, it's not safe to go in. Okay? All right, Fire Service, we can go through that pretty quick. All the Fire Chiefs are weighing in on the revision, so we have three fire companies, I think everybody knows what they are. And Forestry is big on this. Forestry's one of the big players in ESF four. Come on down. At the state level and at the local level, okay? All right, let's go down to the end of that, and here you go, here's your three fire departments with updated info. Just talks about how many people they have and what trucks they have, okay? Moving down, Mutual Aid Suppression Agreement, that's just a template. And this is the forestry, they just re-district and went to Dinwiddie, so they have five counties in their area, including Nottoway, and this is who we have now. And at the bottom, going down, Donna, at the bottom is how much are the dozers? That's where every dozer is in five counties, six counties, and where all the engines are and where the pickups are. It's all right there. Okay, and even the airport. Okay? All right, now, this is us, so we can fast forward through that. Let's go to the tabs, Donna. This is just how to set this, you know, coming into the EOC, opening it up, and what you talked about in your slideshow. Okay, right, go back. Right here, okay. Just turn on a little bit. I got it. Okay, so Command Staff.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to, who's Donna? Donna, what is that? I don't know Donna.
I thought you was talking, being the name of the TV, on the computer, Donna. Sorry about that, Donna, nice meeting you. Here is, here is where we're so potent, I think, as far as daytime. You know, a lot of people are looking for, who do you put in these blocks? And a lot of counties don't have anybody in the offices that you put in the blocks, they only have one or two people. We can immediately fill these blocks just using the administration building. They all have town in these areas, so if we were to set this up as a command staff here, the command would be like, for instance, I would come down, this is what's in writing, to, you know, kind of oversee it and everything. We could tag team with the Chair of the Board, which in this case, Mr. Bowen and I could tag team that command role, or he could be liaison. Finance would be Ms. Tomer. Logistics is Susan. Operations is either Fire Chief, Police Chief, or a EMS officer. And then Planning is Mr. Zo. So pop them right in, that's exactly what they do every single day, and just no better than that. And who would be your number two? Finance, we could put Ms. Buchanan in there behind Ms. Tomer if she needed a break. Susan, we could put Ms. Kelly in behind her as number two. Operations, any one of these can intertwine between the fire departments and police departments. And right here, Ms. Presley, Logan, used to work in planning, she's a good number two. So we got too deep on all these positions, and this is really where the foundation is of getting something going. And then we branched out, branched out the smaller blocks up under that, but you go ahead. Just wanted to show you that, and that's what that organizational chart will show, but I wanted to show it to you text, okay? Moving right along, I think we're all. And all that was, was coming in, and this is a list, obviously, of contacts. Now, I have a better list that I keep, because again, you all agree, we probably don't need all the cell phone numbers on here, but these are mostly office line. Now, let's look at this for a moment, this is, I like this part. Okay, so a lot of people say, well, who do you need down here? This is easy. As long as we follow this list, we will have a potent team right here. As soon as something happens, they start this way. First of all, we have to decide we want to open it up, like the other night we didn't need to, but if you have something that qualifies, Mr. Bowen, myself, Mr. Coniston, social media operator's probably gonna be Susan, to keep up our social media site. Disaster line operator's gonna be someone from that COAD group, church group, and we've got a disaster line set up down here with dedicated numbers, called Nottoway County Disaster Line. It's in place, all we have to do is staff it, and that will be right here, number five. Logistics, that will be Ms. Tucker as well. Emergency Communications would be Ms. Brown from the nine-one-sun. A message park would be anybody on staff. Director of Social Services, Shannon comes over immediately, and then Mr. , you know, Sheriff Jones. Sheriff Jones, or one of the police chiefs, could be law enforcement. So that's our skeletal staff, you can get by with that. And then, if you have a full-blown incident, we really don't need but eighteen people doing the work here. And that's a bear right. If you look at what you have in here right now, we've got two, four, six, eight. We've got nine in here now, can you imagine eighteen people? And you lived it, didn't you? You lived. So there is a time where you have too many, but when you have the ones that are specific to what we're trying to get done, these are what we're trying to get done. And we don't need all of them, but that would be full staffing, and it depends on the event. Because the energy representative, if there's no energy issues, we probably wouldn't need them down here. We may not need Red Cross, but this is kind of the backs, so it's like doing ten or doing eighteen, okay? Now, this is an old picture, but it kind of shaped, the same shape, so I kept it. I just need to change some chairs around, but right here would be Mr. Bowen, or myself right here on the end, and then we have the logistics people spread out, so you go ahead. All right, and that's a log where you come in, just sign in, sign out logs, it's all up and down, okay? All right, now, this is six, which is what Ms. Reed does, and this has been updated, let's scroll on up. Ms. Reed, basically, this is her playbook. So when she is out there setting up shelters, or doing any kind of the mental health support, or any type of special assistance, she has a shelter form, keep going. The second one, this is, we're gonna add to this, but the elderly and handicap, we've got this tab in here to add to, but we went ahead and put the Babs buses in, just in case we need those ADA buses to get our elderly and handicapped around. And then we've got Special Needs, Population Assistance, ambulances and nursing homes, so we've got them identified, and we'll add more. All right, now, this is what you all be proud of. You did this, you did this ten years ago, you'd be really proud of this. Most counties just wish they had this. Three shelters, all of them hold one hundred and seventy-five each. And you probably will never open all three at one time, I don't want to say never, but you got them strategically placed, just wonderful, because if a tornado hit one area, you've got the other area, hopefully it won't be devastated. If it hits all three, well, you know, we'll deal with that, but what you have is backup generators and everything, so.
That's sad.
I asked Susan, and she didn't get back to it in a full hour. I knew it was Eagle, Eagle something. It used to be Mill, five oh seven Mill, right? I had that memorized. Not the Miller Street, now it's changed. Okay, so six is, again, you know, Mass Care, and seven is Logistics. These are your commodities that you would use, and number eight's gonna be upstairs. Obviously, Chris, and the health, the public health, this is all about public health. So a Nottoway Health Department is the primary agency, look at all the secondary agencies that can help out. We've got Crossroads in there as well. All right? That's good. So these are just the playbook that they would use upstairs. Now, EMS is at the very end, they have a small part of this. Emergency Medical Services, this is just play-by-play for them, like going and knocking on doors, helping with evacuation, coming to the shelter to provide EMS support, you know, we'll have a shelter, because we have to have that one EMS provider down there in case somebody has a breathing difficulty and all. This is still current, we're in PD mod, you can keep going. Now, the next few forms are just simple forms for us to be able to use, health advisory, sheltering, physician forms, things that she would use upstairs, and that was new, this is actually updated. So we have the three centers plus the Medical Reserve Corps. Medical Examiners, MAP, and this is the EMS agencies. Up-to-date records here. Right now, Nottoway Emergency Squad is running these numbers, and Burke will run this one. Okay, Search and Rescue. We actually did a little tweaking to that the other night after the event. I'll go back and I'll show you what the meetover is. The meetover is right here on page two. It's page two, let's see. Obviously, the primary, you see who's primary and secondary. I added the drone operators, we really want to get on this drone project. So we have somebody with an MOA that can actually put a drone in there for Nottoway County. And that way, we won't have to buy one, but we can have one that's professional and run with a pilot, because pilots, it's hard to send two people or three people to pilot school. So right here. Nottoway County Fire and EMS Departments are primary on an urban search and rescue, which deals with a building collapse, people trapped in something like a vehicle or building, and we would call special resources to do that search. And it might even go up to a FEMA team, you know, Virginia's got one in Fairfax, one in Virginia Beach, so if it goes to escalate to that, Virginia's in pretty good shape. But that would be what happens, it starts at the local fire department and then moves up. Now, on the load of this search, the Sheriff's Department and town law enforcement could be could be ground searched for missing persons in a town in the wilderness setting. And then the Red Cross comes in too. And the health district's got a little piece of this too, okay? All right, now, the oil and hazardous materials, that's a separate plan. So that'll be coming to you later, what you're voting on, we'll just refer you to that. Um, that's our little average plan, I'm working on that as a separate plan, that'll be coming next, okay? Eleven is what Terry Ashton worked on, Virginia Cooperative Extension. And if you, unless you're into food and agriculture, uh, type of disaster like this, exotic plant disease, zoonotic plant disease, devastating animal infestation, that's what this talks about. So, um, but it also talks about when tobacco's blown over. I know when I worked Hurricane Irene next door, all the tobacco went on the ground, flat. And the Secretary, Secretary of Agriculture flew in on an airplane to South Siberia to look at it. And so that's, that's a real deal, and so you see all the people that can come and help with that. And this is energy. And ESF twelve is where our friends at SLSI Electric Co-op and Dominion Power would help us. Okay, Donna, I think we can fast forward through this. That went on to say what the numbers were to the two agencies, all right? And this is Sheriff Jones and law enforcement in the towns. And basically, this is about securing the scene, so what you saw when Hurricane Ian went through Florida, you know, you saw all the looting was going on. That's what I think of when I read thirteen, thirteen is relative to cut down on looting. It's about security during a disaster. They do this every single day, but the lead law enforcement entity here is Notaway Sheriff's Office, in that particular instance. But if it's in town, it's going to be the town police, okay? So that's all covered as far as safety and security, the next one. And that just tells you what resources each one of these law enforcement agencies have in Notaway, all right? That's just a waiver of liability form. Right now, long-term care. And you see, we have planning and economic development in here for that, to the county level, and housing and community development. So this is going to be something that lasts for weeks and weeks and months and months. Uh, but this is the playbook for them, you know, in this particular section, okay? It's a little dry reading, and, and as far as assessment teams, they're to be announced depending on what you have. Because you don't know what you will have, okay? I will say the building inspector usually goes out and does a lot of that, uh, you know, as far as assessments, being able to look at that. All right, now, this is where Mr. Costin would come in. And so Notaway County Administration, primary, directive of emergency management, Mr. Bowen. These are the top pieces, and these are the next supporting pieces. So this would be like if the media shows up, obviously, um, let's go ahead and look at that playbook. Talks about what the P I O does, legislative affairs, community relations, talks about all those pieces, alerting. Now, this is, you know, obviously, we want to do local radio, TV and newspaper, social media, okay? All right, now, let's talk about military for a minute. Now, we have a gem right here, most counties can't say that. But the army guard has to be requested, even though they're in our backyard, they have to be requested through the Virginia E O C. So unless we have written an agreement between the military and the locality, but Mr. Costin and I have been talking about that, getting Colonel Shaver to do this, we really want to be able to use some of those resources like the command post. We did it during the switch for X line, and we would like to be able to take it out to crew or Burke, whatever they need. So these are things that we hope that we can work out, we just want to plant that seed so you all can help support it. You know, obviously, they're only available when it's a disaster declaration, so we can't just run anything and say, I want, I want your tank today. I need your tank over here, I need your armored vehicle today. We'll have to go to other means, but I just have to address it, so that's all it is to that, okay? The last one, very last one, seventeen. And this is where your community-based organizations, Mr. Bowen, I think you missed when I was telling him, uh, a few minutes ago, right before you came in, we are now calling it COED, Community Organizations Active in Disaster. That, that comes off of VOAD, which is the Virginia model. But for Notaway County, it's COED, because we ended up having, started with faith-based organizations and all the churches in Notaway, but now we have civic groups, and we didn't want to just call it faith-based, because the chambers of Congress came on board as well. So now we've got two chambers, we've got multiple civics, like Rotary, Lions. And then we've got the faith-based. Now, faith-based would probably be seventy-five percent of it, but, uh, we wanted to call it something that would fit in the American Red Cross, is that, okay? So this group is going to be all about volunteer donations as far as, and this is a hard one to manage, but we're going to give them this playbook and say, here it is, find a building, find a place to drop donated goods and services. This is how to manage donated goods and services, okay? And this is a form that I've just stuck in it, this is new. Sample volunteer form where you can track your volunteers. Okay? All right, let's see, that's it. Now, support annexes, we can, we can fly through that, th- these are really boilerplates at the state level, um, critical infrastructure. Um, these don't have a lot of real flavor in them for Notaway, it does tell you what to do, but it basically, like animal control, let's take a look at that, come down. So like the animal control support annex. If something does happen with animals, we've got a playbook here, whereas we didn't have an ESF for this, but it just talks about the domestic animals, permits, and things like emergency evacuation. And one thing we need to work on is, is getting a way to put, um, you know, the pets into a situation that there is an emergency. Because you know a regular shelter is not an emergency shelter, so that would be a nightmare. We really need to have a way to shelter these pets, and we're looking at like a mobile option if we can get a brand or something. Am I correct that CARES, is CARES the actual name? Was that the old Humane Society? Because I had some notes about the old Humane Society, that's not the same, okay?
They probably talk about the, the national organization, like reaching out to the Humane Society.
I want to make sure that name is right before you get the final print, you know, which I'll do that tomorrow. Okay, I think we're done with that, you going through the annexes, let's go to incident annex. So these are support annexes for, for various things. Okay, right here, let's go down, yeah. All right, now, here's a couple of press releases, uh, Mr. Costin talked about it earlier, but having one common press release, you got to read from, here you go. Got one for a spill and a leak, and I think we had another one, let's see, there's another behind it. This one is for a fire explosion. So basically, we just filled the blanks here. And then we get into information technology with cyber, it's a big deal now, cybersecurity. So that's there, tribal relations is there, um. Okay, just keep going. Basically, administration is the primary on these, just because these are support annexes and not the actual, the actual tactics. These are just annexes that you can support whatever's going on. De- debris management, these are debris references, okay? All right, you keep going. Logistics. Now, the incident annex is a little more interesting, let's scroll through, it's right here, let's go back, Donna. All right, this is what, now, I, I need to put a bullet here, the derailment annex is going right here. And we'll keep adding, and like I said, if we do, Mr. Bowen, what we were talking about earlier, was we want to do something like that'll, that'll take your active shooter and bomb threat, and have an annex for that, you know, because that's becoming such a big news item today. But we already have the derailment annex, and if y'all bear with me for like two minutes after we finish this, I'll show you that real quick, because that's going right in here, okay? And all this is, is each one of those bullets you just saw, you've got about two pages each. So I don't want to bore you with that, but you'll get that copy, and there's a cyber, there's, there's your food, agricultural. Nuclear and radiological, thank goodness, we don't live near Lake Hamilton, we don't live near Surrey, so we don't have to deal with that, but it's in there. Um, and it's in there with everybody in Virginia, because you never know. Now, this is one that we will be more prone to, the hurricane and flooding annex. But this is not to take away, but to work with the documents that I showed you early, so it's another playbook, okay? All right. Okay, let's go right here, this is good. Somebody mentioned a dam a while ago.
Mm-hmm, I think.
Okay, here we go. We have one dam of concern in Notaway County. As far as classifications, I went through the Army Corps of Engineers the other day when Mr. Rourke asked the question. I went through, talked to the state, and I talked to the Army Corps, and I'm waiting to recall back from them, but I looked it up. We have a class two dam, the one that's, uh, the reservoir at Barfoot is a class two. So you can see, it has some appreciable economic loss, but not most life loss. And you can tell because downstream is over in Fort Barfoot, it's over in the hunting area. So that's why most of your dams, even Lee Lake, all of the ones that are there, they're not considered a high-risk dam. Here's your director, here we go, come on, come on up, just there you go, that's it. So see, we don't have any class one dams, we have no, no class three dams, just the one at the Notaway-Broncway line at, uh, Fort Barfoot, okay? I looked it up, the dam was built in nineteen forty-two. It's supposed to be checked every four years. This is terrorism, so I think you all have read this before, that hasn't changed. You know, the terrorist, uh, wrapped in nine eleven, the templates were made, nobody's really changed those templates, these are state templates. Everybody pretty much just uses those. And we hope we don't have any terrorist incidents. I think you go all the way to the end, and it may not be anything else. Maybe a funnel list. That's it? All right, let me show you the derailment annex real quick, takes about two minutes.
Slowly while you pull it up, let me just ask, uh, if I could, ask Donna one question, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
Uh, Donna, I know after the, uh, the snow incident on ninety-five, one of the things that they talked about was the state didn't have a snow plan.
Right.
Kind of goes back to the earthquake plan.
Yes.
Um, is there, is the state looking at coming up with some more incident annexes, like specifically, snowstorms, um, ice storms, winter weather, uh, tornado, we don't really, we've never really seen a tornado incident annex. And, uh, you know, the philosophy was, well, those are so routine, we know what to do. Well, apparently, that's not what happened on ninety-five. Yeah, so is there a plan to come up with some more incident annexes to get a little bit more granular?
They are working right now on a winter weather annex, and that's as a result of that ninety-five incident. Um, so that's in the works, um, I, I've seen a draft, I don't think it's been finalized yet. Um, you know, there's a lot of discussion on, as you know, probably Ted, what happened in Northern Virginia. There were Jersey barriers, I believe, on either side of the highway, so the, the traffic all got stuck, the power went out, the traffic cameras didn't work. But with those Jersey barriers, it would have been really even hard to get people up there to check on people, you know? So it, it really was a very difficult situation, we're trying to come up with solutions of how we could check on people, where people had medical emergencies, how they could, um, you know, how they could, uh, report that, that they need assistance, that kind of thing. Um, V D O S open S and technology to be able to communicate with people stuck in a queue, um, on, on the interstate, so lots of different solutions being thrown out there.
Okay.
Yeah, but I'm not aware of other annexes right now other than that.
All right, and then, if I may, I have a question for the, the board, because I want, you know, I think Mr. Hyde and I would like some guidance on this. And we kind of did this earlier during the search and rescue situation. Um, uh, although we never declared we were in that, you know, discussion mode at one, one, Donna's chart here about, okay, you have a local event, now you're deciding whether or not to declare, we were kind of in that area. Um, and, um, Mr. Bowen was conducting a search out at the E M O G Geriatric Hospital as part of the overall search for the, for the, for the subject. And he passed the task over to, uh, Mr. Rourke. So, uh, what I'd like to see in the plans, that we don't have a situation of, okay, uh, who's, who's taking that emergency director role, is, we could do this a couple of ways. Um, basically, set up a rotation, we, money's been talking about backups, having a backup. So that if the chairman, or in the case of emergency management, the director is unavailable, we would automatically go to the vice chairman, and then after that, because you're in a rotation mechanism for chairmanship, run that rotation mechanism. Would you all like to see that in the plan? The other, other option that I'm familiar with from Greensville was, was the chairman, the vice chairman, and then we went down the line based on seniority. What's the board's pleasure?
What if the previous chair after the vice, wouldn't he?
I, I'll leave it to you all, I mean, there's a lot of ways you could do it.
I'm, I'm okay sticking, going by districts probably is easier, because, and you might go through all the districts, because, you know, we, depending on what emergency is, my job might have me tied up, um, she might be open up a pharmacy to give medicines, I, we don't know what in the world might, so I'm okay with the, with the districts, you know?
So let's work that into the, rather than leave it.
We'll work it in.
Yeah, rather than leave it up to the moment, let's, let's write it in.
Sure.
So we'll just do it with the district rotation.
Yeah. And I think we, I think we're looking good overall, because there's enough bench here, like, you know, we're trying to fill the director's role, which is, in this case, Mr. Bowen. And making sure that spot is full during the event, but we'll always be there too on the side. You know, we're kind of like that piece that comes into the side of the chart, like myself, I'm working with you. So, you know, we're making things happen even while you're rotating out, rotating in, you know? But, but it does come in handy where you have someone come and want to talk, on behalf of the county, they, they want to talk about what's going on, and you may have to address it.
But you want to go ahead and hit the relevant.
Yeah, real, real quick, real quick, and you, I know you, you're, you're good on time, um, let me go back to the top, um, I can do it right here, I can just do it right here on touchscreen. Okay, so we, uh, we've had several cuts of this, the L E P C actually got a cut in it yesterday, did a great job. Uh, fire chiefs have been on it twice. So what we've done is just a really short, uh, and Norfolk Southern was really good about this, they, uh, you might have to do it, Donna.
I have no idea what just happened.
Yeah. All right, but anyway, go back to right here, I want to, I want to show you this part, this is where the meat of it is, okay? Assumptions, talking about I C S, talking about mass casualty. There is good news, there are no passenger trains, you probably knew this, coming through Notaway County. Uh, Norfolk Southern gave me this data, so this is as of now. They've already done an edit on this, county school teacher, I sent it to him, I said, hey, you know, can you grade this for me? And then, I guess it doesn't get any better than Norfolk Southern, right, they're the, they're the rail line, but two, two rails, thirty miles, a hundred and eighty-five cars a day, and that's not including cold cars and trains, and locomotives. Hundred and eighty-five a day of intermodal. So the intermodal is the one that has all of the chemicals, as you know, we've got a whole variety of things. I will tell you, ethylene oxide is the worst. We don't have much chlorine coming through Notaway, he said, very little, propane and ethylene oxide. And ethylene oxide is the nasty. So, you know, it is, it is a potential, but this is, uh, this is why we have this, so we, we went on and we put some more information in here about Notaway County. And of course, uh, we got this cleared up yesterday, because Paxton was here, our hazmat guy. If we have to get a team out, just so you all know, it comes out of the RICO. So we can roll out the Notaway County hazmat truck, but we only work at operations level, which means we don't put the suits on, the encapsulated suits, they need to come from Richmond for the real fancy equipment, you know, the real protection. Um, like meters, suits, things like that. We wouldn't have the money to do that, and most localities don't, they just go ahead and call the regional team to do that. And then this all talks about, you know, if we declare because of a derailment. But then all derailments, I will say, if you have a minor one, we're probably not going to declare. But let's take it case by case, we'll all talk about it when it happens, and see how big it is. If there's a couple of cold cars, it may not be an activation. But at the same time, if it's a lot of road impact, we might be bent off just coming on down here, I am about being proactive. Come on down anyway, and we'll see what kind of road closures we need, and see what kind of, uh, night we're going to have after this derailment. So we need to talk about it. Major derailment, absolutely. And then we have the number for Norfolk Southern is in here. And we also have procedures for firefighters, this is really a playbook for firefighters and EMS workers, is when they go, they know who to call, and they'll call the nine one one center and get the ball rolling. And then set up a command post. We also have a section in here, let me see if I can find it, that talks about, well, the mass casualty part is there, but we won't have to worry about that too much, uh, because of the fact that mass casualty, uh, is probably going to be a trained engineer, maybe one or two people, so you're not looking at a lot of people, you're looking at more freight. The A T Vs, and we also have a thing, you know, I might have passed about drones. But we want to make sure we put drones in the air so we can take a look, and, uh, it's in here somewhere. Um, the drones are going to be super, because as you know how Notaway County's rails are, unless you're here crossing, you have a hard time accessing. So if they derail between crew and here, you know, unless you had a crossing, we can fly it over them, that would probably be the best way.
It's at the top there, buddy, it says activate drone.
That's it, that's it, I think it's there, the idea was in there somewhere, and we'll get civil air patrol in here. But we're trying to work out something with a couple of groups to see who would be a partner, that will be willing to put something in the air within thirty minutes, because we can't wait long if we want to do something. We need it quick, and we need a good pilot, ready to go. That's all I have.
All right.
That's, that's it, any questions?
Just maybe one observation, unless I missed it. Since we have a, uh, an, um, agent population here, should we consider adding steps in the? Since we have an aging population here, should we consider adding STEPS and PSR as a partner in this plan as well? Because, I mean, they have specific vehicles that can help the handicapped and stuff like that as well. So just.
STEPS?
Yeah, STEPS and PSR, P-MO, any resource.
What would be the transportation department, where MAMS is?
That, and even some of the resources that they can bring in there.
Okay.
You know.
So it's not just transportation, it's other things as well?
And you can contact Sharon and then the PSR office as well, and, you know, if you want to get an itemized list of what their resources available.
And we can add him, have him add a plan, probably just go ahead and have him as a reference.
We have more resources.
Yeah, send us the info.
I've got it. I've got it. I've got it.
Okay. That's it?
Yeah, of course, again, Shannon's got a play on that too, right?
Yeah.
Social services, you might have some kind of mental health problems too you have to deal with.
Yeah, Shannon's good about that. Alright, any questions, board?
Alright, moving on, trying to follow the agenda here. So we want to talk a little bit about the draft agenda. Next, well, Thursday, next Thursday. This is the draft agenda. Basically, front page is standard material in order. Many sets of minutes, a lot of them work session minutes from the budget. Public hearings, this VDOT secondary six-year plan, public hearing has been advertised. And you've got one zoning matter that will be with the planning commission Tuesday night and following routine you all would have it Thursday night. So the bulk of the agenda, the meat, if you will, is unfinished business. We put the funding request for Virginia 250 under unfinished business or just because it's, it's an item that's new, but it's tied to the establishment of that commission. Now, new business, kind of being hopeful here. If you all are confident in what you've seen tonight on the emergency operations plan overview, we can go forward with that. Or if you all want to hold off and let Mr. Hine make some couple corrections, or I'd say corrections, but additions relative to Mr. Rourke's comments about the transportation. That's, that's y'all's pleasure. Next slide will be set and date, place, and time of the public hearing, and consent agendas, correspondences, and this is, that's pretty much it. Be happy to add the lead as you see to. Thank you, Miss Pledge.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Appointment to certification, DCA, I do have an appointment.
You do?
Yeah.
Very good. Very good. Okay.
That one will come off, hopefully.
Alright, so we'll do the, we'll keep it on there for the appointment.
The I have, I might have a couple, a couple new businesses to discuss. Ted brought this one to my attention. I had that one in my ear too, so I appreciate you doing that. We talked about funding for the Rec Association to get it in this year's spending. You know, you know, I thought, I think we, we know we've come up with a total. We had some ideas we were throwing away, throwing around, and we did ask them for some information of their budget and who was spending what and that kind of thing. So I think it would be maybe a good gesture, since we haven't done it over years, is to have some type of agreement on what, how much money. I mean, if they need it, they're going to need a dam for the kids' balls started up.
Yeah.
I didn't see any one, you know, I don't know what we were thinking about. Maybe, I don't know, three, four, five, six thousand dollars. I don't know what y'all were thinking.
I thought that the one we put a cap around, what's the adjustment cap limit, 5,000?
5,000, I can't remember that too, but would y'all be okay if we put that on the agenda, possible?
For, for progress?
For progress, yeah. Y'all be okay with that? Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Abbott, and of course, this guy, this guy, I shared it with others, this guy, the camp, Berford Town Councilman. He, he's counseling coming to the work session for the recycling, is the way I read that right, everybody understands that. So, but Mr. Abbott did bring it to our attention about, can we put a, just a stick our toe in the water to get a feel of it? Can we put some type of recycling bin at the, at one or two of the drop-offs, just to see how it works? Not a big, I don't think he was talking, and I, I talked to him afterwards a little. I said, you talking about another big container you talking about? And he's, I, I, out of the way, he came telling me they had like 55-gallon drums or something. But my question is, we have to take it to STEPS to follow before recycling, right? They don't come pick it up, right?
Well, STEPS does come.
Depends on what you're recycling.
Okay.
If we make sure like a paper bin or either a plastics-only bin, but then a plastics bin, I think you have an issue with color and clear.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Well, what I, what do you mean do it? Well, I think STEPS brings, my question is if STEPS brings it and then we'll pick it up, and we just put it there where the person watching the
The site attendant.
The site attendant, to make sure they put it in the right place. But I don't want to do too much. I just think, I said, I said, we do anything, I don't know, newspaper.
Probably talk to Sharon too.
See what she offers. Alright, so we don't have to put that on the agenda for that. Then if somebody can reach out to Sharon and say, what do you offer?
I'll do that.
If we want, if we wanted, yeah, but recycling is very expensive.
Really?
Very expensive.
See, they got the truck down here because, matter of fact, I don't believe, I don't even think STEPS does the Department of Social Services because that's a different classification because of the nature of it.
And they come to P-MO and pick up, they do pick up, we do recycle our paper. So we do have a problem. Then they come and y'all take it, right? So it may be something simple like that, you know.
STEPS serves us, but the company, it's the company that hit the tree is the one that does DSS.
Right.
Would you all be willing, if I extended an invitation to Sharon, to attend the June work session, which is where you'll get the report on the solid, the Facebook on the solid waste study? And kind of work in, work in.
Yeah, that could be, that could be, that could be rhymed into gelling. I mean, I'm tied into gelling. But if she says, hey, I don't have anything up or outside like that, then end the conversation.
Well, I can find out, yeah, I can find out with services.
Yeah, right.
They have bins, but you have to keep them.
Right, that tenant's going to be, I mean, it's like, it's like they, they put a newspaper dumpster at Berford for a long time.
They had one at Walmart.
Right, but if, if, you know, people drop bicycles.
They put everything in.
You can't, and then once you put one bad thing, it, you know, it's all, it's all trash.
And if we're going to go in, to consider, if newspapers don't work, if you want to consider it small units, some of them are plastic, the first thing you have to do too is figure out who's going to pick it up.
Right, right. She needs to be able, you know, because you pick it up along with when they pick up stuff from P-MO, that way. Alright, we'll just see what she's got. I'm just, I don't see no need to put that on the agenda then, so I appreciate you talking. John brought up one about evidently, I don't know if we ought to talk about it first in the work sessions, I'll go to the planning commission, but he brought about the blight, some of these old houses and stuff. What I don't, I was going to send an email and said, no, we'll just have a discussion a little bit. Because this probably, this might fall on the roundtable more than anything, but you know, when we start calling things blight, I didn't, there's two words that I want to use, I own the country, okay? But now we talk in zoning, I'm saying agriculture. Because some people might say, hey, I see farmers use old barns to put lawn mowers up on it. I don't, I don't really consider that blight because they got five acres of agriculture they can, you can five-acre park. But maybe the, is it the conservation district that we're talking about, just kind of close to the towns? Are we talking about towns? I'm not sure what, where, where is the, if you had to say, where is the meat and potatoes the problem?
Well, and what make you be able to focus so, more solely on residential structure?
Residential.
Instead of the, instead of the sheds.
Okay.
Because it's, it's where, even though there's some that may be sleeping in sheds, it may be a concern, but that's a different loss.
It doesn't have to be too, it needs to be heavy enough where we would have the right to send the buildings right there and look at something. Not maybe condemned, but you need to look at this. I don't know how to, see, we're in a little doing the zoning, right? I mean, you know, so I'm trying to think of how to introduce that to the planning commission, but I don't want to introduce anything to the planning commission if this board doesn't say, I don't know. Anyway, you want to chew on that one and think about it?
Yeah, we'll, we'll call up some options on that one. That's kind of starts getting into a little of your maintenance code. And yes, there are, there are different degrees within that in terms of what's deemed imminent threat. Like a building that might be degraded, collapsed into a road, as opposed to an ice storm. The towns, we just actually got a demolition permit completed today on a house in one of the towns that they actually took the person for. They, they had to go that far.
Well, Dr. Johnson, I had, I've talked to some other people from other counties, you know, they've had, they've had situations where we had people that are squatters going and living inside of an old home place, and people didn't know about it for a long time.
We have a zoning violation where we have that exact same thing. It's somebody who's squatting in the private owner is reluctant to act.
Got you. Alright, so we'll I'll just say, I'll just say this, we'll ask the planning commission, maybe, we'll tell them, somebody come up with some verbiage and we'll, I call it, we'll flirt with it a little bit, let's see. Because I got to get a feel of the planning commission. This is just, you know, they're the ones that really like, you know, they recommend stuff. But then if it's a problem, it's a problem, you know, so I don't want.
In a certain area, John.
Well, well, obviously it would be county-wide, but I think it also would go to actually help to support the towns when they get in some of these endeavors.
Well, the town has, they have rules and regulations and ordinances to deal with that.
Well, that's why I commented.
But out in the country, when a lot of people, their old barns, that's
Yeah, that's the reason why I said, it's more of the
It's that transition zone that it's not in town.
I think, I think, I think that's where you, it's the suburbs, if you will. I think it's a conservation district, is what I think it is. Most of my conservation districts are right outside the town, you know, where you can build a house over two acres or something like that. And agriculture districts every five acres. So, but anyway, I, I don't know, just maybe need to look at a zoning map too and see that, do, I mean, look at it. Alright, I think, I think that was
Alright, so we're going to add a contribute, under new business, we're going to add the contribution or appropriation directly. Do you all want to go forward with the emergency operations plan or do you want to hold off another month?
Well, I'm trying to, if, if Buddy's good.
Yeah, that's all we do. That's wonderful.
Okay. Because we don't know when we might have to open that book.
Well, and it
That has to go to public handful peer review.
It does not have to go to public here.
Oh, okay.
Early, it's completely on you all. That's why we're going to give you the brief up tonight. So
Mr. Constant, any shelter update this month, do you have anything?
On the ample shelter? I actually had it as a note in my administrator's report. And then we did the pre-bid conference, but I can put it No, there's something, no, we haven't received anything from CARES. If we get something from CARES, I'll add it in, but we haven't gotten anything yet. I'll reach out to Cecilia tomorrow.
So what's the deadline on the bids, or?
It's the 24th. Right, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I think I mentioned, I want to keep that on unfinished business, Ted, if we don't mind, so the public knows.
It's just going to be a little, it's just
That'd be fine.
It's going to be a little work. Keep, if you don't mind, keep that on that.
Alright.
That way, then they, we're keeping it, they can see it. So thank you, sir, and I forgot all about that.
And we'll show her up there.
Yeah. Anybody else got anything else ahead on it in the heart? So, so I went to a meeting before I go around table, and I went to a meeting today and I apologize to be late, but it was all about funding and stuff. Sharon, you know, I might have to eat crow. Sharon might know what he's talking about. They are pretty confident that everybody's going to get 5%. It's, it's, the governor's budget is 5%, it's 7% on the House floor and 7% on the state floor. I mean, and so if they don't get back together, the Senate floor, excuse me, if they don't get back together, it'll be, it's going to be 5% or higher. And they're pretty confident. Enough where they're going to start payrolls June 10th. To start picking the monkey out. Anyway, so anyway, but that's, that's a state facility with other state facilities, but they're pretty confident. People know things that I don't know. Anyway, so, anyway, so we got, if we going to put the, if we going, we need to put the, I think we had to put the budget on public here, we need to set the town place for it. You know, here, here where the public is set, that has to say. But we, we need to come up with some kind of verbiage of what are we going to do with that? I think I mentioned, see, you can come up with a prompt motion or something like that, but anyway. How do we verb, how do we say it verbally?
Verbalize.
Yeah, right, verbalize.
But you want, you want that for when you actually adopt?
Yeah, well, 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 we'll stop, stop training for a second. How are we going to public hearing and they don't know how much money is there? We don't really, well, we got to balance without it, don't we?
Yeah.
We got to balance with no raise.
Alright.
Okay. But what I'm getting at is, is that Miss Lady?
No, 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 because we, I mean, I, I think we, before we open a public hearing, we got to be very precise about we are still waiting for the governor's budget.
That's true, we don't know.
And we are, since we are going into the general fund,
Right.
there could be up to this amount.
Got you.
Additional. So I think we can add those figures and say up to this amount.
I just want to make sure we are very, very transparent with that.
Okay. I mean, for the employees as well as the public.
And and let me, I want to say this. And I'm, I'm saying this publicly and I want y'all to agree with me. If, if county employees come to the board and speak about raises, they should feel good that they can come to us.
Yes.
Okay, not with any type of retribution or reprimand back. They had their citizens just like we are.
Absolutely.
And so if they want to come to the board and speak about the increases, I want them to feel free to be able to do that.
Absolutely.
Okay. Because they're, they're, they're citizens too.
I agree.
And if, and
I can't ever recall people coming to our board where we had recriminations
Yeah, I don't
as a result of that.
Well, I've always wondered
We've never put people down.
And we haven't, Sharon, but I wondered if some of them felt
Like they couldn't.
They couldn't.
They were afraid.
Right, right, you know, you know, and maybe they haven't, but I, I just want everybody, so if one, if one of you can have a statement on the roundtable Thursday night about that, that'd be fine with me, hold up. But, and I didn't want to speak out of turn. I just want to make sure we okay. But I think we all, you know, it's okay. It's okay if somebody comes up and says, hey, let's, let's board members hear me out. I make such and such, and you might not think that's a lot, you know, I don't know, let them talk, you know, I mean, what? Now, now, if the employee, if they're, if they're, yeah, but
The flame broke down, fix it.
Okay. Alright, I can handle that. Alright.
Statement like that, then someone is going to take into this, you don't want to comment out.
Oh, you think it'll be the officer?
It could be.
Okay. I probably wouldn't feel that way. Alright, that's all I, I have to say, and I've done my roundtable part, so Vice Chairman, thank you for coming forward on this, I appreciate it.
I have nothing, sir.
Alright, supervisor summons.
You know, just a nice presentation.
Oh, yeah, good job.
Very good.
Long overdue too. That was a lot, that's a hard thing to get together.
Tim, you might heard about it. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I'm, I thought I've had a 14-hour day today, and he's talking down.
There's no.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I totally forgot. Could we possibly prepare a level appreciation for Ms. Downs? She's, she, she come off the social services board.
Yeah.
Jacqueline Downs. Yeah, I'm sorry, I forgot about that.
Very faithful.
Yeah.
So you want to put that on?
Which jack is that?
That's
Is it Sam's?
Sam's wife, yeah.
They are the Downs, right? Sam's.
No, it's Sam's.
Is that something the board wants to take action on, or is that when we just wrap something up and have the chairman sign?
The more appreciation about, I mean, getting these people to serve is one, is one thing, but, but staying and being as proactive as she was, I mean, I think the more appreciative we I think the more appreciative we can be, the better.
I mean, she has new business, uh, letter appreciation.
Yeah.
What is this?
She's just thirty.
Okay, so if, if you, if you write up something, I'll get Miss, uh, if you put it on there and you already got it written up, take action on it. I'll get Miss, Miss Summers to read it if you can do it that quick.
We'll make it work.
Okay.
We'll make it work.
All right, and I'll put Miss Kelly on it. She was talking, she, she's, we're running out. All right, supervisor Vaughn, you say you don't have anything? Supervisor Shaw, anything? All right, all right. I'm entertaining motion to a gentleman. So, any second, second? All right, all the things, y'all stand. Let's go on. Thank you all very much. I've had it worthwhile. Yeah, that's been long overdue.
Yeah, it is very
Steve, you've been